Hi, how are you?
Good.
Those are my dreams.
I don't know.
Everybody got three.
They see me.
Yeah, and I, you know, we probably need to talk about how these decisions for resolutions get approved.
Well, you've got to be mindful.
You know. And I really haven't seen it. I wanted to take a look at it because, um...
Oh, hello. Fine, how are you?
You too. How are you doing?
Yeah. So you can see, right, because the first we're seeing it is here.
Those are the revisions to the mobile food court.
Okay. Dang, and this is the first we're seeing them. Thank you. Oh, wait, um...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll be calling this meeting to order shortly. I just want to remind you that when the meeting has begun, please use the side doors rather than the central doors so that way there is not an interruption of a speaker when you are using, entering or exiting the middle doors. It can be distracting for those watching at home and for those when they're offering their train of thought with their remarks. This meeting is hereby called to order at 6:03 PM. Please stand for the invocation, which Councilman Parker, if you could please deliver, or if you want to introduce someone, but you have the floor.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, we just come again. We who are your handmade service, Lord God, thank you for yet another day, a day like no other, a day that we shall never see again. We pray, dear Lord, that you will give glory out of all that we do this day. We ask a special blessing, Lord God, on those that have been victims of violence, Lord God, especially those down in Texas right now, Lord God, who are suffering. We ask in the name of Jesus that as we go about the business of doing the business for this city, that you would guide our hearts, our minds, our thoughts, that those things that we do will be pleasing in your sight. This is our prayer in Jesus's name, and all your things of God said, amen. Amen and amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you remain standing, we have a moment of silence. Those that we know we've lost in our community, Sharon Bergman, Kelly Goss, Mary Ellen House, Marilyn Howard, Bradford Hudson, Bishop William H. Murphy, Sr., Lee Payne, Randall Richardson, Juanita Sanchez, Louise Cersei, Mike Turney, Ray Williams, and we reiterate, lifting up the names of those that have been impacted by violence in Texas today. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Harrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a forum.
Thank you. Quorum being established and all members present and voting. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Parker, seconded by Rutherford. That motion is now before us. Are there any amendments, questions, clarifications? Discussion on the motion. Could I please have a motion to amend the agenda to move items number seven and eight presently under grants and make that the new one and two?
I'm making a motion.
Is there a second?
Support.
So it's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson, so it's a motion to amend the agenda, and that's because the staff member that can most immediately speak to that, Ms. Born-Gesser, has a scheduling conflict that wouldn't allow her, if the meeting runs multiple hours, we might miss out on her context for that item. Any further discussion on that amendment before us? Councilman Rutherford.
So is there a way to make a, to move up, um, oh, you already did it. Nope, just forgot. You already did it. Thank you.
So seven and eight become the new one and two, and everything else moves down correspondingly. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on that amendment, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
That motion carries. Now we're back to the main motion, approval of the agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion, amendments, changes, clarifications? Hearing nothing further, we move into Councilman Parker.
I did have a question regarding the consent agenda. Would that next or do that now?
Now would be a good time. Is there something you'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
Well, no, I just wanted to make, mention that in Agenda Item D, that in the amendments, it shows that I was not here, but I was.
So what we'll do is we'll pull from the consent agenda, Letter D, and that will come after approval of the consent agenda. It'll be a standalone item without objection. We won't need to vote on that. Consent agendas are not debatable items, so if we have anything we need to debate on, we just flag it, and that's what we'll do. So without objection, what we have before us is the agenda as amended. We've already voted to move Items Seven and Eight to be the first agenda items held, and then the consent agenda has A through C, and then Letter D will be handled right after the consent agenda, the special meeting on the budget minutes for May 18th, 2022. Any further discussion, clarification, or amendments? What we have before us is roll call on approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting as amended. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson, so that's the three sets of minutes in the consent agenda. Not a debatable motion. Roll call on approval. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
That motion carries. We're now at the May 18th, 2022, special meeting on the budget minutes. Council, is there a motion to adopt those minutes? We'll have to do it as a standalone?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Moved by Nicholson, seconded by Rutherford, so now we have discussion. An item that may need to be changed. Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On those meeting minutes, which, what was the item that you were flagging?
The, the D of the agenda, it lists that I was not here for the May 18th meeting, and I was. I think that was one of the budget meetings.
Just making sure I get to it. So when we did roll call, we did a motion to excuse Councilmember Rutherford.
Looks like his name was just left off the present member list.
Yeah, just left off the present because I was here.
Okay. So is there a motion to amend the minutes, to add Councilman Parker's name as members present?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson. Any debate on that amendment to the minutes? Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on that amendment. Clerk Doyle.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
That motion carries to amend those minutes. Now the main motion before us is adoption of those minutes as amended. Any further changes, clarifications, or questions? Hearing none. Roll call on approval of the May 18th, 2022, special meeting on the budget minutes as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
That motion carries. We are now at recognition of elected officials. Are there any elected officials in our community that we should be recognized? Vice President of the Pontiac School Board, Kenyatta Bowman, you have the floor.
Should have wore heels today. I just wanted to say, oh, I acknowledge President McGinnis, council members, Mayor Grimal. I just wanted to say thank you all for the work that you do. We appreciate you so much, and also I hope that the community is tuning into school board meetings because we have a lot of exciting things that is happening in the Pontiac School District. We have a lot of pathways for our young people when they graduate, and also I just wanted to say on my personal note that I support Lawrence Industries that is trying to come and do things in our community, also providing workforce development and things like, and jobs. So I just hope that us as Pontiac residents and natives can continue to press forward and look for the betterment of the City of Pontiac moving forward. So again, I thank you all for the hard work that you do in this community, and community members, just thank you for being present. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Bowman. Are there other elected officials that we should be recognized this evening? With that, we are at Agenda Address. President Pro Tem Carrington, were there any requests for Agenda Address this evening?
Yes, President McGinnis. Ms. Irene Wright, Agenda Item Number 10.
Good evening to Mayor, City Council, and for those of you who I haven't had the opportunity to say congratulations to, I do extend my congratulations to you for your win, and I would like to say, when much is given, much is expected. With that in mind, I do want to acknowledge that there is a debate about what will be happening at the Lawrence Address. It is not my intent to come in and dictate what will and will not occur. What I would like to do is ask that you do your due diligence, that you look at the options. I know that there is a large discussion about the jobs that are coming here, but it's about more than jobs. It's about the health, safety, and well-being of this community. It is also, for me, the issue of where is Pontiac residents in this issue? Are Pontiac residents involved in the process? I do believe that we can do both. I've heard someone say that you either can get jobs, get your street done, or nothing else. I disagree with that. I think in the totality of this, we need to understand that we have to invest and invest wisely. In fact, I said a statement. The effort you put into initial process will dictate the investment and outcome of this process. And remember, Pontiac is the diamond in the rough. All of the other cities are saturated, so I behoove you not to exhaust this at this time. I'm speaking specifically about the growth. As this develops...
That does conclude your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Ms. Julian Ruffin.
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable Council. I just wanted to start out by saying my people perish for lack of knowledge, okay? I think it's imperative that as we have new industries coming into our community, that we do our due diligence, that we understand best practices, and look at what other communities are doing. Speaking regarding Agenda 10, I'm not here to deny opportunities for jobs. I think we can all grow together if we think wisely about what we're doing. I'm concerned about environmental impact. There's a lot of things that I'm starting to understand, looking at what the state has relegated, regulated and not regulated as we continue to build the framework for this new industry of marijuana and any other industry that we don't really have our arms around because we've never been here before. So I ask that you all do your due diligence, understand the best practices, look at what Denver is doing regarding this issue, look at what Eagle has suggested, and as I stated, they're still trying to build their framework. I think it's important that we partner with the right partners. They do their due diligence and best practices as well, but it's even more important that we all work together and communicate with the community. I suggest town halls because there's a lot of things that we don't know, and I have a neighbor around the corner. She can't be here. She's a senior. She uses cannabis, but she doesn't want to smell it. There's other issues that people have regarding the cannabis issue, right? So I just ask that you do your due diligence. I did have the honor of opportunity to go to a facility. I didn't smell anything.
That does conclude your time.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Ms. Lori Bishop.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. I just wanted to show my support for the Lawrence Street project. I own the first and live at the first three parcels there on Lawrence Street, and I'm completely in support of it, and I hope that you will see fit to allow this man to do what he wants with this building. And I also am pretty familiar with the industry, and I don't think this operation is going to affect us in any way as far as our environment. My son, Chase, works around the cor, or lives around the corner and used to work at a grow.
Yeah, I supported full area of Jackson Street down here downtown, so.
And they're very safe, so there's no really worry about the security. There's going to be cameras, and it's going to look a lot better than it does. It's been a dump site for a while, and I would really like to see the opportunity to improve the value of my street and the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That concludes public comment. President McGinnis?
Agenda address, okay.
I mean, sorry, Agenda address.
We are now at the previous item on the Agenda Number Seven, which is now the first item of Agenda Business that we'll consider. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the City of Pontiac's agreement with the Pontiac Community Foundation to establish the City of Pontiac Fund?
I make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson. Now we give the floor initially to the administration to give context.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'll turn it over to Ms. Born-Gesser to discuss the context of why we believe that the city needs to partner with a 501(c)(3) fiduciary, number one, and number two, what the process was to select this particular proposed fiduciary organization.
Thank you, Mayor. In an effort to leverage funding from all sources, the City of Pontiac's executive administration would like to enter an agreement with the Pontiac Community Foundation to establish the City of Pontiac Fund by way of fiscal sponsorship. This fund will allow the City of Pontiac to raise charitable contributions and 501(c)(3) eligible funds in support of city sanctioned projects and programming. We went through a formal RFP process for this selection. The RFP was posted to the city's site by the Finance Director. It was also sent directly to specific organizations such as the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan, the Pontiac Community Foundation, OLSA, La Familia, Main Street Pontiac, Lighthouse, Community Foundation of Greater Rochester, and also to our friends at the county to pass around to their networks. This is a very common practice in municipalities and creates a space for raising funds that the city wouldn't otherwise be eligible for. The only respondent to this RFP was the Pontiac Community Foundation. They proposed and submitted a response, which was included in your council packet for review. The City of Pontiac's Department of Grants and Philanthropy, our soon-to-be department, will continue to aggressively pursue grants that the municipality is eligible for. However, in the instance that the opportunity is solely 501(c)(3) permissible or a particular donor or corporate partner prefers to give a charitable contribution to a charitable organization, we will utilize the City of Pontiac Fund as a conduit to realize that charitable contribution. The proposed fee schedule is 7.5% of every amount under $75,000 and 5% of every amount in excess of $75,000, and this fee rate charged for grants will be, for grants that are paid in installments will be determined by the total award amount, and this is in support and consideration of the Pontiac Community Foundation's agreement to sponsor this fund and the work that goes into grants management, which is, as we all know, heavy. The city's administration, myself, and any designee in my place hereafter, would provide the council with a fund balance sheet for inclusion in the council agenda the second meeting of every month for transparency. No other individual aside from the Director of Grants and Philanthropy or other designee, as per the mayor, will have the ability to raise funds into the City of Pontiac Fund. The Director of Grants and Philanthropy or soon-to-be, or the mayor, will be the sole point of contact for donor engagement involving the fund, and no other individual, commission, or group will have the authority to solicit contribution. So essentially, this is an operation that will be set up so that the city can realize and pursue grants that we wouldn't otherwise be eligible for, to really diversify our funding portfolio and diversify our funding pursuit plan.
To put a finer point on that, there are a number of grants that may only be gifted to 501(c)(3) entities, and we as a city don't want to leave that money on the table. We want to make sure that we can still go after some of those grant opportunities, but we obviously need a 501(c)(3) into which those grant dollars, if they're awarded, can go. At the same time, there are some donors, corporate donors, for example, who may much prefer to donate to a 501(c)(3) rather than to the city directly, and similarly, we want to make sure that we're not foregoing those opportunities. I know, for example, that there are some corporate donors that are interested in donating to arts commission activities, and the Arts Commission really is a arm of the city government, but they are only willing to give to a 501(c)(3). At the same time, we don't want to have the 501(c)(3) entity or other individuals take on a life of their own, so we want to make sure that we put those safeguards in place, including making sure that the council is provided with a record of dispersments every month, that we're making it very clear that it's the Director of Grants Management who is running the show here and not, you know, some sort of loosely affiliated person with the city who serves on a board or a commission, and so we're trying to put in place those safeguards to make sure that there's real accountability, that these funds are raised and dispersed in the interest of the city, and that City Council is kept informed every step of the way so that the executive branch is being fully transparent with the City Council and by extension with the public about fundraising initiatives and how those funds are being used.
President Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I just want to thank the mayor and his team for making sure that the safeguards that the City Council asked for is included in this document. Also, you talked about the process. So you put a call out to the community to ask all the nonprofits that had interest and been a fiscal entity for the City of Pontiac. Did anybody else apply? Because I want to make sure the community hears this, so to know that this was a very fair process that we implemented.
No, there were no other applicants. There were no other proposals submitted in response. There were no other proposals submitted in response to our RFP. But I did reach out to the organizations that I listed before directly, inviting them and pointing them in the direction of the RFP as it lives on the city's site as any other RFP would.
All right, thank you. No follow-up question?
Oh, follow-up?
No follow-up.
Okay. Councilman Nicholson and then Councilman Parker.
I, I want to say thank you to the Pontiac Community Foundation for considering this arrangement. It's, I'm sure, as you reached out to some of those others, they say we're not in that business anymore because this, like you said before, grant management is a very heavy job. There's a lot that goes on with it from a financial perspective, but then administratively. And so, thank you. I know this isn't certainly a money-making opportunity. You're not in that business anyway, but we appreciate the partnership, and I'm looking forward to voting yes. Thanks.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, sir. I just have one question. Is it possible then that as people, because there's always somebody who comes late to the party, if you want to dance? Is it possible then that after you do this, that other, that there would be other nonprofits that could join later on with the city, be partnered with the city for this issue as well?
So this particular City of Pontiac Fund would be the fund that the city would use to facilitate its c)(3) eligible or permissible grant activities. The RFP process was open, and after it closes, we don't typically allow others to apply, but there certainly would be opportunities for creative collaboration, as there always are in the granting world. So opportunities for partnership on any sort of grant-funded project is run-of-the-mill and standard.
And it's worth flagging to that question, Councilman Parker, that the work is expected to commence in June 2022, will be reviewed 12 months after commencement date, and will stand for a term not to exceed two years. So there's another opportunity as other organizations may sort of determine that they have stronger, surer footing and they want to pursue this, that they'll have opportunities going forward. Councilwoman James.
Uh, where will the funds be held? Who's going to hold the funds? Would the Community Foundation be holding, receiving the funds and holding them for the Arts Commission, or would the funds then be transferred to the city?
So the funds would be held at the Community Foundation. They would be the fiscal sponsor of any award that we went after because they are, they're a 501(c)(3).
So these are funds that would really never see our budget, but as the mayor said, we would receive monthly reports about what was being received.
Correct.
And I, sorry. Councilwoman Rutherford, then Mayor Grimal.
So, um, the, um, Community Foundation, do they still have a relationship with the Community Foundation of Southeastern Michigan? Because you know how sometimes when there's opportunities for us to get funding from the Community Foundation of Southeastern Michigan, they normally use the Community Foundation of Pontiac to be the fiduciary? Is that still going to be going on once we start this?
So our relationship with the Community Foundation for Southeastern Michigan as the City of Pontiac is strong, and we have a wonderful relationship with the Pontiac Funders Collaborative through Community Foundation for Southeast and Ms. Freya Harris over there. And so there are instances and, and grant applications in the hopper now that would come directly to, to the municipality. There are grant opportunities through that same organization that may be only for nonprofits and, and which point we would partner with the Community, Pontiac Community Foundation.
Thank you so much.
Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, I, I just did want to emphasize that we would still prefer to raise funds directly to the city whenever that is possible and donors are willing to give directly to the city, because, among other reasons, there will be an administrative fee charged by the Pontiac Community Foundation, but it's better to have funds raised into the Pontiac Community Foundation and have that fee charged than to forego raising any of that money at all. So this is not a first option, it's the second option, if folks aren't willing to contribute or aren't able legally to contribute directly to the city, and that's really the, the purpose here. We, we believe that it would be too cumbersome to have the city work with more than one 501(c)(3) fiduciary at the same time, which is why it's an RFP process for one 501(c)(3) fiduciary. But as has been noted by President McGinnis, this is just for a term of up to two years, and as is the case with, with any professional relationship, it's good practice to put out RFPs periodically and see if there are other partners that might suit the city's needs better. So we will certainly be doing that in accordance with best practices and in accordance with this resolution.
Others that wish to have the floor. Legislative Council, Shar.
Just a quick question of the agreement is great. Just wondering, where is the fee schedule actually? Because I know it's not in the resolution.
So if you look at the agreement, the fee is item 11.
Item 11.
Looks like maybe you're looking at the, their response to the RFP. The fiscal sponsorship agreement looks like this and has their logo on the top.
It's not in the resolution.
Yes.
Thank you. Other discussion on the motion before us. It is the resolution to approve the City of Pontiac's agreement with the Pontiac Community Foundation to establish the City of Pontiac Fund. It's been moved and seconded, and that's what we've been deliberating on. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. We move now into voting on roll call of the adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Ms. Dean?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, one abstention.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. We are now at, is there a motion to approve, adopt the resolution to approve the City of Pontiac submission of a grant applicated, application titled Pontiac Arts Crawl to the Michigan Arts and Culture Council Project Support Grant Program in the amount of $10,000?
I make the motion.
Second.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. All right, that motion is before us, and administration, specifically Ms. Boring guess her.
Ms. Boring guess her.
Uh, yes, thank you. The City of Pontiac's executive administration seeks your approval to submit a grant application titled the Pontiac Arts Crawl to the Michigan Arts and Culture Council Project Support Grant Program in the amount of $10,000. We are all familiar with the Pontiac Arts Crawl, and this grant would be in support of, of that project as a whole and the Pontiac Arts Commission. The, the support grant has an award ceiling of $30,000, and the grant request cannot exceed 50% of the total project cost, meaning it would potentially require a one-to-one match. Historically, the Pontiac Arts Commission has raised roughly $10,000 in support of this project, in support of the 2022 Arts Crawl. Myself and the Pontiac Arts Commission will raise funds into the Pontiac Community Foundation City of Pontiac Fund, and will repeat this activity in 2023. The funds raised, in addition to any funds appropriated by the Pontiac City Council for the budget, will fulfill the matching requirement for this grant award.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Um, so my question for the executive side, why do we just go with $10,000 as, as the starting rate? And also, if there, is there a chance later on down the line, if we want to actually improve the funding for the Arts Commission, how do we, how do we go about doing so?
Great questions. I'll, I'll defer to Ms. Boring guess her regarding the, the $10,000 targeted amount. More broadly, though, there are a number of business entities in the city that have already expressed an interest in contributing to arts commission activities, and they're simply waiting for the 501(c)(3) fiduciary relationship to be finalized. So we're going to, in very short order, see a lot of funding flow towards arts commission activities, which is very important in terms of bringing downtown back to life and having more events downtown, but also having more events throughout the city and throughout our neighborhoods.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Ms. Boring guess her, do you want to speak to the $10,000 question?
Sure. The $10,000 was a conservative estimate and review of how much money the Pontiac Arts Commission had previously raised in, in years past in support of the Arts Crawl. And so, in an effort to maintain a conservative projection into 2023, which is a year that is far from now, we stuck with the historical trends of funds raised, because it does require a match. Anything beyond what, what can be reviewed from prior years would mean that the city would extend itself to providing the match if we were awarded. And as we learned in 2020, you never know what's going to happen, and so I just prefer to be conservative with that amount.
Thank you so much.
Other further discussion on the motion before us. Hearing no further discussion, pardon me, the motion to adopt the resolution to approve the City of Pontiac submission of a grant application titled Pontiac Arts Crawl to the Michigan Arts and Culture Council Project Support Grant Program in the amount of $10,000. Roll call on adoption. Clerk Doyle.
Harrington?
Uh, yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We now go to the, the previous number one, an ordinance amendment to an article regarding mobile food vendors, the second reading. This was before us last week. So, Mayor, administration, anything further you'd like to provide? You do have a, a modified version that shows, it captures the amendments that we discussed and identified potential needs at last week's first reading, but Mayor, you have the floor.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Gustafson may have some additional items to add, but I wanted to just quickly highlight some of the modifications we've made since last week as we listened to some of the suggestions and concerns that council, excuse me, the council expressed. We wanted to try to make this even more flexible. You know, the, the version that we had brought at last week's council meeting really was based on the existing food truck ordinance, and all we did was modify it to make it clear that it applied to other food vendors, mobile food vendors, like barbecue stands. We've now gone a step further and tried to build in some additional flexibility. I'll begin by saying that we are stating very clearly that applicants for a business license as mobile food vendors do have to obtain all necessary licenses and permits from the Oakland County Health Department and other applicable governments, but we delete the requirement that they attach some of that documentation to their application. The theory there was that we don't get involved into whether they're complying with IRS code or immigration laws or other things, so why should we get involved in whether they're complying with Oakland County Health Department regulations? That's between them and the Health Department, and we thought we would, we don't have any real expertise in that area, so we thought we would take the city out of the process of verifying that. That's really between them and the Oakland County Health Department, just like workplace health and safety regulations are between them and the state of Michigan, or between them and the federal government, and so forth. We also wanted to make sure that we were clarifying a couple of things. There were a couple of aspects to it that seemed a little contradictory. One aspect said signs were only allowed on the actual vehicle. Another portion said that they were allowed along with seating and tables, so long as they could be stored in the unit. So we decided to just make it clear that signs are only allowed on the vehicle themselves, whereas seating and tables and other equipment can be deployed as long as they're normally stored in the unit. We also wanted to make it clear that generators are allowed. I know there was quite a bit of discussion last time about whether this prohibited gas generators, we wanted to make it clear that generators running on gasoline and diesel fuel are allowed, and that even portable natural gas containers are allowed, so long as they're not hooking up to a natural gas main or bringing a very large stationary natural gas container. We also shortened the distance within which they're prohibited of operating within any civic event or city-sponsored event from 500 feet to 150 feet, but we also allow a waiver in those cases, not just if the event sponsor agrees, but also if they obtain a special permit from the planning division. And we specify that the city shall not charge a fee for such a special permit. Similarly, in terms of the prohibition of operating within 150 feet of an existing restaurant, we allowed exceptions if they get written permission from the restaurant or if the planning division authorizes a special permit for that purpose. And again, the city is not allowed to charge a fee for such a special permit. Similarly, again, operating within 150 feet of a residential building is generally not okay, but it is okay if they're operating on property that's owned commercial, industrial, or mixed use, or again, if they get a special permit from the planning division and there cannot be a charge for that fee. So we tried to balance the interests of residents and homeowners as well as existing brick-and-mortar restaurants, while simultaneously building flexibility in if the planning division grants special permits and emphasizing that we cannot charge fees for those special permits to try to, again, make sure that we're being very permissive and progressive when it comes to mobile food vendors, while making sure that we're protecting health, safety, and the property rights of, of other existing residents or businesses. Anything to add, Mr. Gustafson?
Actually, no, the mayor did a great job of providing a detailed summary of quite a bit of back-and-forth debate and contemplation based upon the very good comments that council made last week, and I want to thank you for that. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Would this be administered within your staff, or would this be administered within building staff?
Uh, it would be administered through planning, but I will work closely with the, as we put in here, the building safety department, which would basically deal with licensing.
And, and you feel confident that the way it is structured now is workable from a, a staff administrative perspective?
Uh, very much so, particularly looking at the future in regards to, as we know, in regards to the mayor's recommended budget, talk about reorganization and that whole community development department that's going to be created of planning and economic development and also building.
Thank you. Councilman Nicholson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, for balancing those interests. Oddly, I'm, I'm one of all of those interests, having a brick-and-mortar restaurant and a food truck, and I think that you've captured.
And a home.
And a home. I have, I have a home. But I, I think you did a really great job in giving a lot of flexibility, but also ensuring that the city has the ability to know who is operating a business within the confines of the city, which I think was the entire intent behind wanting to have this ordinance. So I'm, I'm very happy with it. I do have the question of when that special use permit is granted, will the brick-and-mortars in the area be notified?
Oh, yes, mu, mu, very much so. And I guess I would look to if that food truck was interested in, say, as you referenced, Charlene's, I would ask that they would obviously connect with the owner and get their approval. Alex will give me a call or send me a note, and that will be put in the file.
Okay.
Then I, I don't really have to get involved. We would look to those property owners first.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor. Pro Tem Carrington.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I, I actually definitely like that we've been very flexible, but I kind of have a concern with one part of that flexibility is when we say that we don't want to know if these vendors have actually went through the process of, of making sure they got their, their paperwork right from Michigan Department of Health or Oakland County. And we just stated that we, we're very concerned with safety, but I don't see how, if we, if they don't have the paperwork when they apply for their permit, how are we concerned with safety? So, so I'm, I'm just kind of, you know, I don't want to E. Cola outbreak or Seminella outbreak, and then we say, oh, we, you know, we, we didn't require them to have their paperwork.
Yeah, good question. What, what happens is, is that, and the way I've seen it in the past, is that, yes, they, in the past, they did provide that documentation. However, we also then, they provide us that information. We do call Oakland County Health just to verify that that is a true copy, and so there is a little give and take in regards to it. They also want. They also want to know where they are going to be located, those vendors, because Oakland County Health comes out and starts inspecting, particularly on weekends of Dream Cruise and other larger events. They want, they are out there patrolling and making sure that they are all licensed, following their rules, and also they have our business license. So there is checks and balances, bottom line.
Thank you.
And I do have a follow-up. Ms. Pro Tem Carrington, you asked in regards to, previously, actually last year, we only limited it to 10 food vendors in the entire city. And yes, I think we, yes, we charged them 150 for that, for that period of time, from April to December. So that equated to $1,500. And if you think about it in regards, if you want to drop down that fee, whatever it would be, yes, there's probably going to be more vendors, but I suspect we've been, so far, we probably have, we're probably at that max now. So by the time we get this on the books, so to speak, we'll probably have more interest in, from other vendors to participate.
Thank you. On a related question, does the City of Pontiac require documentation from brick-and-mortar restaurants that show compliance with Health Department or serve safe compliance, things of that sort?
I don't believe so. They...
They're obviously required, but in terms of documentation related to business license or things like that. So I don't think we'd want to put extra scrutiny on a mobile vendor versus a brick-and-mortar vendor, per se.
Yeah. I think primarily it comes into in regards to getting their certificate of occupancy, and that goes through team inspection. All the trades, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing are inspected, so from, including fire. So all of those types of things are, but I don't believe, I think it's really up to that business owner in regards to how he treats, like, I know, like, some restaurants, like, one person could be just, has it serve safe certification.
But my point is that the city isn't requiring that submission of documentation for a municipal administration.
No.
I want to point out that on page three, letter P, "Mobile food vendors shall not be located within 150 feet of a residential building unless they either are located on private property, zoned commercial, industrial, or mixed use, or obtain a special permit from the planning division. The city shall not charge a fee for such special permits." That addresses the question I raised last week in terms of, for example, on Auburn Avenue at South Jesse, the proximity to a residential building versus, you know, sort of the zoned parcel itself. So this adequately addresses that because it's a commercial function happening on a property whose zoning provides for commercial operation. So we don't have to get out the measuring tape to see where is something in relation to, because that residential property is clearly and knowingly next to a commercial parcel.
Correct.
Councilwoman James?
Item M, if you could clarify that for me, because that's, again, in regards to seating that I brought up last week.
Correct. So Item M talks about that vendor shall use his own seating or tables or other equipment unless such equipment is originally or ordinarily stored within that vehicle. So in other words, if that vendor, that food truck, had a couple of tables and chairs or whatever else he wants to put out there at that time, maybe such as a little small barrier or whatever, he could do that, but he has to have that equipment with him. And it just can't be, it has to be 10 feet away from that truck.
Right, but he would have to store it in his truck?
Yeah.
It wouldn't...
There's many food trucks around here that does have a couple of tables. You know, some people like the fact they can eat right there, or they just basically grab the food and go and do their own thing.
And, but you feel confident to follow up and expand on that, that if there was a special event in a park, for example, the park tables, picnic tables, those are sort of fixed infrastructure, that mobile vendor doesn't have the responsibility or is prohibited from...
Correct.
You know, essentially, citizens are making the choice about whether they're going to lay out a blanket or they're going to use a bench that's already permanently there.
And that's a very good point, because particularly in a public park, they have to go to DPW to, I would say, if you're having some kind of an event where you're having a number of food trucks, or, say, there's a birthday party and there's going to have, or some kind of small festival and they're going to have food trucks, they're going to have to reserve that park for that event. So there is fees associated with that aspect of it, I believe, and they would then, you know, say, hey, I want some of your kitchen tables and so forth to be located there.
But that would not really relate to, Item M is basically just for that vendor...
That is, yes.
...themself, that if they wanted to use the tables, they would have to be tables that they brought and took away, that they would be able to fit into their own trucks.
That is correct.
Okay.
Councilman Goodman?
So, the question that I have is how does this ordinance affect residents who may or may not park their food truck or mobile equipment on their own residential property? Because I know we speak about it not being located within so many feet, but how does that ordinance then pertain to people who then store their equipment on their own residential property? That's really the only concern that I have, is like, how that will be implemented or play out?
Storage rather than operating.
Yeah, so let's say, for example, that a food truck vendor owns a taco truck, and then at the end of the day, they drive it to their own property at home to then obviously store it overnight.
Yeah, so if you're...
How does that play out?
If you're talking about where the truck itself is stored, we did address that, and I don't know if I mentioned that item, but originally, the ordinance had said, and this is in subsection I under the regulations, that originally said, "Unattended mobile food vehicles left on private lots overnight shall be considered a public safety hazard and may be ticketed and impounded." We deleted that so that any mobile food vehicles may be parked overnight, unattended, on private property.
Okay. So lots in this case, of course, including driveways as well.
Yeah, sorry. That's something that city council actually didn't flag last week, but we flagged it in our review of the documents since last week and said, well, wait a second. Where are folks supposed to store their food trucks if they can't leave them unattended overnight on private property? So...
Yeah, so obviously, so in this case, lots also including driveways.
That's right. It could be a person's home. It could be someplace where someone's not even sleeping overnight. As long as they have the permission of the private property owner, someone doesn't have to be sleeping on that property or present with the vehicle.
Others that wish to have the floor? Councilman Nicholson?
I'll add, for food truck licensing in, at least in Oakland County with the Michigan State Food Law, they do require that any food truck is not licensed without a commissary. The commissary has to be a licensed facility as well, and it must be returned to the commissary with every 24 hours unless it is, the Health Department's been notified. So if somebody is parking their food truck and really staffing their food truck and stocking their food truck from their personal home, that would be in violation with the county's and the Michigan State Food Law. Regulations around operating a food truck are very, very strict. For example, I can't be both the registered food manager, which is a requirement of the application, for both my restaurant and the food truck. They have to be separate food managers. So we do, there are going to be circumstances by which, if we got into the complexity of reviewing and overlapping the county's process, we'd also be having to become experts in the Michigan State Food Law, which changes and would require a lot of updating. So it's good that there's this separation. We're really concerned about making sure that the residents' best interests are in mind with the business operating, but from a health and safety perspective, the people who are best qualified are handling those matters.
All the more reason to take out this specific language about the county Health Department and just instead say that they need to comply with all applicable laws, including the Health Department at the county, but more broadly, any level of government. And we're not going to be in the business of trying to check that they're in compliance with every possible federal, state, or county law.
Councilwoman Rutherford? Well, actually, the speaker's list is exhausted, so I'm about to, is there a motion to amend the amendment to substitute the documented changes in the document before us as discussed?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. Clerk Doyle, does that satisfactorily reconcile and substitute the language as we need? All right. Any discussion on the motion before us, which is taking these additional changes and basically substituting these to be the body, the substance of the amendment before us? Hearing no discussion, roll call on that motion to amend. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. So what we have before us is an amendment to the article regarding mobile food vendors as amended. We just voted to apply the substitute language. Any final discussion on that motion before us? So without hearing no further discussion, speaker's list exhausted, we move into roll call on adoption of the amendment to article regarding mobile food vendors for this ordinance. Clerk Doyle.
Jane?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
No.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay.
That motion carries. Our city's ordinance has been amended accordingly. Is there a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance to amend ordinance 110-42, currently codified as Municipal Ordinance 2369 as of September 10th, 2019, Phoenix Place Apartments?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by James. That amendment is now before us. These amendments to city ordinances require two readings, so this is the first of the two readings. Mayor Administration, you have the floor.
Take it away, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. This matter came to our attention through Oakland County for Phoenix Place Apartments. It has a pilot, 4% pilot, but the properties were three parcels that were condensed into one, and the ordinance did not reflect that change in the parcel descriptions. So what we have here is an ordinance to amend the ordinance. The initial ordinance, number 1852, became effective in 1983, and here we are today, whereas in 2015 is when the parcels were combined into one, the three parcels were combined into one. And actually, the property description reflected that, but the ordinance and the municipal code were not updated. So what we're requesting is that the language, excuse me, that reflects the three parcels that have been combined into one, and there was a survey conducted by our professional surveyor in 2015. So now the current ordinance is number 2214 to be recodified and become ordinance 2369, which is what you have before you, which was September 10th of 2019, which is four years after the properties, the parcels were combined. Are there any questions?
So essentially, this is playing catch-up with parcel delineation changes that were made some years ago.
Correct. The three parcels, as I said, were combined into one.
Councilwoman Rutherford? Mayor Grimald, and then Councilman Rutherford.
Yeah, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Phillips, is that this is a situation where there was a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, given to Phoenix Place Apartments. The property description, which is to say, the formal legal property description in that pilot did not match the actual legal description for that parcel of property as recorded in applicable deeds with the register of deeds. And so this is modifying the pilot ordinance to make sure that the legal description in that ordinance actually does match the legal description for the property. Is that accurate?
That is correct. And as I said, it came to our attention from the county, they were just going through some of their records and realized that the two weren't consistent.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Yes, if this ordinance is not corrected, couldn't it affect the pilot itself?
That may be a legal question. The pilot is actually in effect and current. They received a, you know, tax bill, $66,000, which is actually due on June 30th, and, you know, they are current.
Oh, no, I understand it, but I just wanted for the viewers at home to understand the importance of the ordinance being changed because the pilot could or possibly could not be effective. I just wanted to be clear.
It is important that the records be consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? Hearing no further discussion, that concludes the first reading. It will be back before the city council at our next regular meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution recognizing the first Friday in June 2022 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. That motion is now before us. Any discussion from council? Councilwoman Rutherford?
Now more than ever, we have to recognize the issue that we have in America with guns, especially after what just happened today in Texas. And we need to be reflective of that as a city, and we need to stand together and say enough is enough because gun violence affects us all, whether it affects you directly, indirectly, or you know somebody. Everybody somewhere knows someone that has been affected by gun violence, so I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman, and thank you, Councilman, for helping draft the resolution. You have the floor.
I think one of the most difficult things about this is, one, recognizing the importance of having to state these things now, unfortunately, but especially having the perspective of a recent student, a very recently graduated high school senior as of a few years ago, as well as an educator. And the importance of this resolution gets reaffirmed when you look at the news today, having seen that 14 more people have been shot and killed in Texas today, 15. So the fact that that happens constantly, that it, this is the, I believe, the 144th or 114th day, yet we've had 212 school shootings or mass shootings in the United States. So the fact that, again, we keep running into these same situations where entire communities are affected by gun violence, there comes a point where we actually have to begin to say the hard part, have the conversations, but not only have the conversations, but actually do some action. Because, again, we run into the conversation of thoughts and prayers, of promises that have been going on for decades, and unfortunately, we're at the same point where we were previously. And I think this is just one of the most important things that we can kind of do at the moment, given what's happened today.
Other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I do want to point out that the, in the resolved, in addition to, in partnership with Mayor Tim Grimald, we'd be recognizing June 3rd, 2022 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in our city. Also, on that day, the nation is encouraged to wear orange to raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And that is done in part because in 2013, 15-year-old Hadiah Pendleton was killed, shot and killed in Chicago, Illinois, and in celebration of her 25th birthday, which would have been this June. That's part of what's prompted National Gun Violence Awareness Day and the Wearing Orange in tribute to her and all other victims of gun violence. Any further discussion on that motion before us? Here, Councilman Goodman?
I request that everything after the "therefore be resolved" be read for the community.
Okay. Therefore be it resolved, the Pontiac City Council, in partnership with Mayor Tim Grimald, hereby recognizes June 3rd, 2022, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Pontiac, Michigan. And further resolved, the city council encourages Pontiac residents to wear orange on Friday, June 3rd this year, to raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And further resolved, the City of Pontiac renews our commitment to establish working relationships with other local municipalities, community partners, and community members to establish an evidence-based public health response to address the underlying social, economic, and systemic factors that promote gun violence. And further resolved, to reduce, reducing gun violence and pledges to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep citizens safe, and call upon all residents to prevent further future tragic incidents of gun violence in every neighborhood in our city. Roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution recognizing June 2022 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month?
I make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson. That motion is before us, and want to acknowledge Councilman Goodman for helping write this council resolution as well. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Goodman?
So I, I think there is a lot that's added to this resolution that I put in here that I think is extremely important. When we discuss the concept of Pride Month as a concept, especially in black and brown communities, because it, it is a fact that in many black and brown homes, there are individuals, especially youth, who do not feel comfortable being themselves at home, just given of how our community has treated them. And I think it's just very important to recognize the history that exists within Pride Month and just within black history in general, which is why the first whereas in here points out that a black transgender woman named Marsha P. Johnson threw the first brick at Stonewall. So pointing out that the movement was started by a, a black queer woman from New York back in the, back in the 60s, who, again, began the, the movement for what many view as equality, not only for the LGBTQ community, but also within the black community, and pointing out the intersectionality and the importance of people of all different backgrounds and multiple different movements, especially this one.
Other discussion? Councilman Rutherford?
I think it's boldness that we're doing this because it hasn't always been done in this fashion. I think the LBG2QNY, as I call them, community needs to know that we stand by them, we support them, and we respect them because love is absolutely positively love. That's what I got.
Other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of the City Council Resolution Recognizing June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no naes.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution recognizing June 2022 as Men's Health Month?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Nicholson, seconded by Rutherford. That motion is before us. Want to give a shout-out to Pontiac resident Daryl Folks, who put it on our radar that this is a very serious but overlooked aspect in the Pontiac community, but also nationally, in terms of the mortality rate rates for men, especially African-American and Native American men have the shortest life expectancy of all groups in our country. And in terms of awareness of that, but also preventative health measures, we want to raise that cause. We want to ease any sort of stigmas or, or hang-ups to say that, that, you know, we're not about that because it matters, and June being the month where Father's Day falls, a healthy father means a healthier family, and also modeling healthy behaviors for the children that that family is raising. Any further discussion on the motion before us?
For me.
Councilman Rutherford?
I think this is so important because sometimes men, especially black men, don't get appreciated in this community. And so I just think it's cool that we're finally saying that all men matter, like we say all women matter. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Other discussion on the, Councilman Goodman?
And the other thing that I want to add is just, well, one, the general importance of this, but also to kind of give, like, some community information. I mean, this is especially important in a community like Pontiac, where specifically, black men and, like, the black community is affected by things such as sickle cell disease, and black men have one of the highest rates of heart disease. It's extremely important to, to have that conversation and point out how important health really is, because unfortunately, in the society that we are in, many people get into the habit of neglecting their health. And it truly does begin to not only affect them, but the people around them. And I think, you know, reminding people how important it is to take care of themselves, first and foremost, especially the men in our community, it's extremely important.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, and, but by voting yes, the men on this dais are agreeing to have health screenings annually as appropriate, no, I'm kidding. But, uh, we do need, we need, we, all of us, all of us have an opportunity to be more proactive and, and take our health seriously and into our own hands. Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of the council resolution recognizing June as Men's Health Month, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no naes.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve MICA 6 Development Agreement?
I make the motion.
Support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson. That motion is now before us. We give the floor to the Mayor and Administration for context.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'll allow Ms. Phillips to run through all the details, but I do just want to emphasize that this is a proposed agreement that is agreeable to us as the executive branch, as well as, I understand, to the developer, to MICA 6. So we're excited that we believe that we have a meaningful agreement that sets clear standards and expectations and accountability mechanisms for that. And MICA 6 as a great, accountable, sincere community partner, has been very forthright in embracing the proposed development agreement, and we appreciate his collaboration in that regard. And I say his, even though it's MICA 6. I should say its collaboration, but in particular, your collaboration, Mr. Yocum, as, as the leader of MICA 6. Ms., Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor. Hello again, City Council. This resolution comes about after the, a past approved resolution to approve the Oprah for both the district and for the tax exempt application. So you have before you a resolution to adopt a development agreement. And the details in the agreement are pretty consistent with a typical, well, a typical development agreement for the City of Pontiac, which has both requirements of the developer as well as the city. Within the document, a few things that are, I would like to address is, one, that we're looking for a certain number of jobs, that's in there as well, that also that the other properties that the developer owns, that they comply with the codes and the regulations for the city, that no more than 10% of the 53,000 square feet would go to nonprofits, and that if that's, if all 53,000 square feet would be rentable, which I'm sure that number would be somewhat reduced just for inside space. There are approximately 12 prospective tenants, and we have Mr. Yocum here who can address, there's an organization chart that's provided, and that gets into the detail in terms of the, the property being conveyed to the owner, that there would be a manager, a management entity as well, and then after the financing is secured, that the management will somewhat change. He really can explain the details of that organization chart because there are, you know, several different entities, but they all have a role in assuring that this project comes to fruition. And we've specified the timeframe for which the, the construction should occur, and then also that there's another period where it's, the, a percentage of completion has been obtained. And with that, I'm gonna, well, I'd like to address any questions that you may have to me, and then I'll have Mr. Yocum add.
Councilman Rutherford?
My question is for, is for Mr. Yocum.
Okay. Councilman Nicholson?
Item K in page, on page four, is it typical that we have developers submit the Pontiac-based subcontractor outreach reports? And who do those go to?
Well, we ask that they actually conduct outreach. We'd like to have as many Pontiac residents and businesses be a part of a, a project as possible.
Those are reviewed by the Economic Development Department?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And would those have been seen in other development agreements, or is that sort of standard practice?
That's pretty standard. We pretty much include that in, in our development agreements.
So for the council and community's benefit, the obsolete property rehabilitation district at 640 West Huron was established, and the exemption certificate, when considered by the City Council, it is contingent upon the, the development agreement approval. So that, that is this step here, so that exemption certificate isn't sort of ratified, if you will, or isn't live or in effect unless and until the City Council concurs with the development agreement as proposed. I want to acknowledge the Administration for being very thorough and diligent in capturing what Council's feedback was in previous considerations of that obsolete property rehabilitation question, and because I see it reflected in some of these elements of the development agreement, and I know that there was a good deal of negotiation that had to go on between the entities, be it the city and the, the limited liability corporation. Any further questions for Ms. Phillips before we give the floor to Mr. Yocum to elaborate on any further context that might be helpful for our decision-making?
And if I might add, just before I step away, that the city is supportive of, of this venture, of this development, and that we will assist in terms of, you know, assuring that, you know, their inspections are done timely, that we're assisting them, you know, as they can secure their financing. So we're working as a team, working in tandem with this project.
Thank you, Mr. Yocum. If you'd like to take the podium, anything, any further elements that you'd like to bring to the Council's attention?
No, I, just to reiterate what Ms. Phillips already said, the city's been a great partner in putting this together, been very amicable. We, you know, each drafted sort of one, and we said, okay, this one, and we have this one, and let's get together and just have a, a quick call and, and kind of work out our differences, and, of which there weren't many. I, I think everybody wants this project to succeed. Everybody's excited about it, and, and so I just am very grateful for the city, for Ms. Phillips, for the Mayor's Office, for Deputy Mayor, for all their help, Attorney Chubb, helping draft this agreement. We find it very agreeable. We're very happy with it.
Councilman Rutherford, and then Councilman Nicholson?
Yes. Are you trying to still pursue, two questions. The project must be completed by December 31st, 2024, correct? And are you trying to pursue funding from more private donors? So what is your current funding amount as of, as to date?
Sure. So we, there are a number of different, and, and Ms. Phillips wanted me to address the flow chart. Also, there's, part of that flow chart is a lot of what you just agreed upon a minute ago, is that there are certain organizations that want to work with a 501, certain organizations that don't work with 501, that has to be an LLC. They want to see a master tenant rather than feel like this whole project is, you know, depends on a house of cards of a number of tenants, so there's a master tenant entity in there as well. And so, you know, there, there are a lot of different funding pieces that are working. Since this was approved, or the, the application was approved, contingent, even with the contingency on this development agreement, we just got a $500,000 grant from the Total Healthcare Foundation to support this project, which is really exciting. And so we're moving forward with that. We're working with, right now, with Dave Coulter's office and the Brownfield team there to do the tank pulling, using those Eagle funds that we talked about last time I was here. So we, we have now dropped, we have a three and a quarter million dollar gap to close.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Councilman Nicholson?
The county's participation in demolishing the, the also obsolete property across the street, the former housing complex, is there a timeline on that?
They are demolishing this summer. That is a three, they're expecting a $237,000 demolition project. 34 Murphy is the apartment building there. It's been vacant for at least 15 years, and the county was agreeable, and they said, if you're going to open a community center, we don't want to do that with a giant vacant building next to it, so we'll move forward on demolishing that building for you guys, so.
The, in the back of the property right now, is that WRC's mounds of earth?
Sure. So we are, we agreed to let WRC use our playground space behind that building to pile up the dirt that is part of their pipe replacement project that's going on in that neighborhood right now. So it oscillates between being, I feel like, 50 feet tall and 10 feet tall, but that is their dirt and their project.
It's, I've noticed that some of the sidewalks are now starting to be reinstalled. Is that, does it, does it seem, it seems fortuitous that, that we've been able to have a brand-new sidewalks around it, too, so I'm excited to see that, and
Yeah, I keep looking at breaking up more of them, so.
Uneven, yeah, yeah, we should, we should. Um, the
Pontiac City Council does not endorse the defacing of sidewalks.
The, the flow chart that we have, can you just sort of talk about the need for the master tenant, the, how, so the MICA 6 community fits in as the nonprofit support arm, but at this point, who is the taxable authority? Is that the, the master tenant?
So, now, this is
For the LLC.
I will say, here and here is what I, I will do my best to describe this and talk about this, but my entire team will recognize I am not a lawyer, and I am not an accountant. So, a number of different things here. Currently, the, the building is owned by Webster, or is it by MICA 6 Community LLC, and the fundraising organization that's working on developing a lot of the funds for that project is MICA 6 Community 501(c)(3). There are tax credit possibilities and opportunities here, particularly new market tax credits, which only, which don't necessarily work with 501s. They want to work with LLCs and for-profit organizations and developers. And so there is a for-profit part of this as well, who, once the funds are raised and financing closes, so that's, we have all of our money in hand, the property gets handed over to the for-profit entity to execute the new market tax credit part of that project. And then, like I said, that there were several funding sources that were, you know, they see multi-tenant buildings, and they go, ooh, this seems really dicey. What if all of your tenants quit tomorrow? Who's, who's paying the bills if all of your tenants walk out of this building tomorrow? And so that is the Webster Community Center Manager and Master Tenant, LLCs are the two organizations who are, will be on, on the hook for any funds that need to get paid out eventually if all of our tenants walk away.
Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? Councilman James?
On item L, it says that you're, you're going to hire 40 employees. Is that the number for the employees once the building is actually up and running, or is that construction, does that include construction?
So construction doesn't count. It is, it's a different number. The 40 is that once this building is operational, there will be 40 full-time equivalent positions in that building.
Okay.
So some of those might be part-time head start teachers who are there August through June, you know, there's that two months there, but so there will be a net of 40 full-time jobs in that building, once the building is operational.
Okay.
Other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. We move into roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve the MICA 6 Development Agreement. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no naes.
That motion carries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the certification agreement, Certified Local Government State Historic Preservation Office?
I make the motion.
Support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. That motion is now before us for consideration. Mayor Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'm going to allow Mr. Donovan Smith to get into, to some of the details. I, I do just want to say that this is an agreement that the Michigan State Historic Office requires municipalities to enter into in order to apply for certain historic preservation grants, and that's why we're bringing this today. We do not believe that this is something Council needs to sign off on. There's no money attached with this agreement, and we believe it's within the purview of the Mayor's Office to do this, even without City Council's approval. But in the interest of transparency, we thought this would be great to bring it before Council, and we thought Council's stamp of approval would put an exclamation mark on our city's commitment to historic preservation and to bringing as many resources to bear as possible to pursue it. And with that, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be in front of this honorable body. As mentioned, we are seeking a resolution to approve the cert, certificate agreement to designate or allow the city to be designated a certified local government. Staff have been, has been working with the Historic District Commission, SHIPOL, the State Historic Preservation Office, and, and the MBDC since about 2020, when the previous council approved an update to our historic ordinance for historic preservation. By participating in this program, it does allow us to be eligible for certain grants that are exclusive to those communities that are certified local governments. In addition to, it gives us direct access to SHIPOL, where there are some services they can provide to us directly, such as sending certain properties or districts to the Historic Register. They can do or districts to the historic register. They can do certain sub-granting and grant programs they can allow us to participate in, and then they can also help us with surveys and design materials and guidelines for improvements in, in our downtown historic district and our residential historic districts. So, I mean, the, the program's pretty straightforward, it doesn't ask a lot of staff, only that we continue to do what we've been doing, which is preserving historic assets and districts in our community. So with that, I can entertain any questions?
Councilman Nicholson, and then Pro Tem Carrington?
With the last few interactions that I've had with Historic District Commission, I'm hoping that part of this too gives us access and broadens our horizons where we're not just thinking about the houses. While the houses, of course, are our main priority to maintain, but I want to expand that horizon to other landmarks that are in, within those, those historic neighborhoods, like our historic cemeteries, but also our light posts, our historic signs. You know, a lot of, at this point, a lot of that's being taken care of by residents. So, I would be available and very interested in partnering in any grant writing opportunities to, to expand our horizons past just our homes. And I know there are other neighborhoods, certainly we have a broad array of different designations within the city. It'd be interesting for us to really have maybe some of those laid out at our district meetings, to, so people understand what this benefit brings to those neighborhoods, because there's always those conversations of, do we want, do I want my neighborhood to be historic, or do I want to be some subset, or not at all? You know, what are the benefits? Because I know there certainly are benefits, there's reasons why we went into those agreements in the past, but I think this can certainly provide more value to some of those conversations.
And to that point, they do offer a lot of training opportunities and materials, and funding opportunities for us to do more trainings with the residents and letting them know what are the benefits of having properties in or outside the historic districts.
Great.
In addition to migrating those properties that are historic but not on the national register, it streamlines that process because we would be a certified local government.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pro Tem Carrington?
Oh, thank you, President McGinnis. Concerning this designation, is this only the MICA 6 property?
No, this is unrelated to the MICA 6 project. This is the City of Pontiac's designation, so it is citywide, but it is more specific to those properties that are historic and the historic districts. So, it's not related to MICA 6.
So, basically, Fair Grove Historic District, um,
GM Modern House.
GM Modern House, okay.
Downtown Seminole Hills.
All right.
The cemeteries are historic districts, so they may be designated locally, but they may not be designated nationally, which is a separate list. And then there are grants dedicated to properties that are solely on that list, even though you may be locally designated historic, if you are not on the national list, you may not be eligible for those grants.
Councilman Rutherford, and then Councilwoman James?
Thank you. So, this will also help with District 1, because there's some land that they're trying to make and turn into a historical district. Would this body, with this ordinance or resolution help to speed that, the process up?
It possibly could, yes.
Okay, because I know Mr. Bass and I have been trying to get something for D1, so I'm just trying to make sure we can get it done quickly and efficiently.
Yeah, there are a lot of technical difficulties, but to your question, yes, it is possible that this agreement can assist in assigning or designating new areas as historic.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
And completing surveys and those things.
One more time, it does what?
It can assist the efforts of assigning and creating new historic districts through surveys and studies.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It should be noted that District 1 has two historic districts in it, Franklin Historic District and the Downtown Commercial District. Councilwoman James?
Yeah, I was wondering, is this being driven by our Historic District Commission, or is it being driven by the mayor's office?
It, the process, it would be a combination of both. We started in 2016, and that was prompted by updating our historic ordinance, because it was dated, I believe that was the 1988 version at that time. So, through the efforts of working with SHIP-O to identify best practices in that update, is what brought forth this process, and updating the ordinance is the first step in all the criteria to be eligible. So, they work hand in hand.
But as a, as a former member of the Historic District Commission, have they, are they involved in this? Because I, I know when I was on the commission, there was a disconnect between our meetings and just the integration with the city. So, is there an integration? Is there a?
I'll allow Mr. Smith to speak directly to that insofar as it relates to this agreement, but more broadly, yes, it's very important that any matter relating to historic preservation in the city, particularly when it comes to actually designated historic buildings or historic districts, is coordinated through the Historic District Commission.
And, Councilwoman, to your point, the Historic District and the commissioners were all heavily involved in this application process.
Okay.
They, we did have meetings where we discussed the goals and objectives after we were included in the program, and they were involved in that process, yes.
Anything for, others that wish to have the floor? I want to thank Mr. Smith and Mr. Gustafson, as well as all members of the Historic District Commission currently and past members for your involvement. That brings us to the position now to be better poised to capitalize on the resources that the State Historic Preservation Office has on the table. Hearing no further discussion, speaker's list is exhausted. We move on to roll call on the adoption of the resolution to approve the certification agreement for us to be a certified local government with the State Historic Preservation Office. Clerk Doyle?
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item, it's a second reading of a zoning map amendment, so it doesn't need a motion of second, it has previously received that at the last meeting. This is ZMA 22-03 at 108 West Lawrence, parcel identification number 64, 1429452009, and the zoning map amendment would be from the present C3 corridor commercial to the new M1 light manufacturing with conditions. Mayor, anything before we give the floor to Mr. Gustafson?
I don't think I have anything to add since last week, and so, Mr. Gustafson, I know we talked a fair amount about this a week ago, but take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. Thank you, Council President, City of Council. I'll be happy to answer any particular questions that you may have. I, the applicant is here, answering any maybe specific questions you have. It's been noted in regards to the location of this facility. The condition, as, as we mentioned, this is a, what we call a zoning map amendment with conditions. There is a, a reason, a conditional rezoning agreement, which was in your packet, and that specifies certain select uses that could be located at that facility, meaning that a medical marijuana grow and processing, no other M1 light manufacturing uses could go into that facility based upon that conditional agreement. As I mentioned last week, that that agreement is record, once signed by the applicant and also the mayor's office, it is recorded and, and put onto the County Register of Deeds. So, it does spell out in perpetuity in regards to what can occur at that facility.
Councilman Rutherford?
From the executive side, Mayor Grimal, did you say that you guys were in support of this project?
We believe that the benefits of this project in terms of job creation, in terms of tax revenue, certainly outweigh any of the concerns that have been expressed, especially in light of the fact that most of the neighboring residents in this area who have spoken on the subject between city council meetings and planning commission meetings have expressed support for the project.
Okay, and I just want to also point out, I don't know if you put this into records, I have about 60 letters that each of the council have got received from people that actually live in the neighborhood, that have fully supported it. This is not people that are made up, like Rick David said he supported, Ashley said she supported, George said she supported, LaShonda said she supported, and just to name one more for the heck of it, Paul Steen, and they live on Lawrence, Franklin, Lawrence, William and Lawrence. I think it's important that people know that it's not the council saying that they just supported, but the neighborhood people that actually stay there, who wrote letters, they support it also.
That's true.
So, my only question is, is this, just to put that on the floor. My only question is this, we do have it to where we have an accountability, like, like, if they don't do what they need to do, then we can, at any time, place, or gesture, take back the zoning, is that in it?
Right, if they, if they're not following suit in regards to, obviously, say, for instance, they decide, which they, they won't, putting other types of uses in there that wouldn't be allowed. Because also, you think about it this way, aside from this process, it, as City Clerk Doyle had mentioned last week in regards to going through his whole process of getting, submitting his, their applications for a grow and processing, which is quite extensive, and then following up with that, knowing the fact that that use is outside of a just overlay district of medical marijuana, it would have to go to planning commission again for a special exception permit, and then also site plan review. So, and then building, for sure.
Okay, and finally, and approve this unanimously too as well, right?
They did.
Okay, thank you.
And so, Councilman Rutherford raises an excellent point. This essentially is a zoning map amendment change with conditions. There are many additional steps that the private property owner would have to pursue due to the complexity of the, of the project and the industry and the unique
Right.
layers that would further be checks and balances that the, the clerk spoke to previously, which was very helpful. Thank you, Clerk Doyle. Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you, President McGinnis. First and foremost, I, I do like to thank the gentleman that allowed me to come out and actually tour one of their facilities, myself and someone from the community. So, and, and my vote is not based on this particular, what I seen at that facility was I seen diversity in the workforce. So, I gotta be able to be honest with what I saw. I also seen a very happy workforce, not because it's a marijuana situation, but, but I stepped aside and actually talked to a few staff, and I seen that the jobs were definitely at the high end of $18 per hour. So, those are the positives. My issue is with the overall implementation of the marijuana ordinance, where it doesn't allow for social equity. You can throw some of those community benefit agreements in the trash because they are trash. I'm just going to be truthful with that. So, as a council, I didn't have no way of controlling that, or no, no, or, or no interpretation of that, what was happening with those agreements. I do know, most of those community organizations didn't have their own attorneys. That's an issue in itself when you enter into these agreements. I also know that when it comes to the, those companies that actually receive these benefits, is that it could be questioned that those weren't the best community benefit agreements that the city could have accepted at that time. So, that's my issue with, with this overall implementation of this process. So, whatever I vote today is not based on these gentlemen, because I actually, I do think they run in, it's a very professional ran organization. So, overall, my objection is to, we don't have no social equity within these agreements stating that Pontiac people could have some kind of ownership moving forward in some of what we do in this city. And I'll close out on that.
Clerk Doyle, do growers or processors have requirements for community benefits that the dispensaries illuminate us?
Thank you, Mr. President. They do, but there is no social equity component in the ordinance. And again, the ordinance was a ballot-initiated ordinance, so unlike with recreation, if you want to incorporate social equity, then the council can do that, but this was a ballot-initiated ordinance, and there was no social equity component, just says, uh, community benefits. Now, a number of those community benefits may address social equity, but it's not required by the ordinance.
So, this proposal or other growers and processors, when they get to your stage of the process, then that is when, you know, such things would be incorporated?
Right, they would have to make community benefit pledges.
And so, Mayor Grimal?
Yeah, I do want to just piggyback off of the comments of President Pro Tem Carrington and Clerk Doyle, and just emphasize that I think, well, I can't speak for every council person, but I know that I personally strongly support a social equity component and requirement in a marijuana ordinance. When it comes to the existing marijuana ordinance, when it comes to the medical marijuana ordinance that's already in place, we don't really have that ability, because this was approved by the voters of the city. And as a result, it's just not an available option. So, we need to play the hands we've been dealt by the organizers of the initiative and, and by the voters who passed that initiative four years ago when it comes to the existing current ordinance. And that ordinance is very clear, that there is a community benefit component, but before it's even time for the applicant to apply to the clerk's office for the marijuana grow and processing license and propose those community benefits, we need to first rezon the property. And so, what's before us today is simply rezoning the property. As I've indicated, I think the benefits of doing so greatly outweigh the costs, and it makes sense for us to rezon the property so that this matter can proceed to the next stage, which is going to the clerk's office with a community benefits proposal to be evaluated by the clerk's office. The other thing that I would say is, to the extent that we end up moving in the direction of adopting a recreational marijuana ordinance, which my sense is that, that most council members support, I support it, it needs to be done right, obviously, but I am strongly supportive of trying to include a social equity provision in the recreational ordinance to the extent we can legally do so. And I think that's the time to have that conversation about a social equity component. But when it comes to this applicant, we've got to operate within the ordinance as it was passed by the voters four years ago, and I'm confident that if we approve the rezoning today and they move forward with their application to the clerk's office, that they will have a meaningful community benefits component to their application that comports with and fully satisfies the spirit of the ordinance that was passed by the voters of our community.
Mr. Gustafson, my understanding is that the applicant has a video that shows spatially where this site is at last week's
Yeah.
At last week's meeting, there were maps and visuals provided that we have in our materials
Right.
that many in the audience may be familiar with, but now might be a nice time
Sure.
for that visual to be shared.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers on the speakers list, questions, deliberation? Councilman Parker?
I do. Um, Mr. Gustafson, as I was sitting here looking through all the ten points that they're supposed to get to, who's the keeper of making sure they do? Is that, would that be DPW code enforcement or who, or planning?
Say that again?
To make sure that they meet all the prerequisites of this agreement. Who's the keeper to check, who's checking and balancing it?
Um.
Is that planning?
Uh, planning, uh-
DPW, code enforcement, who?
Uh, in regards to, obviously, uh, well, let me see, back up. In regards to ensuring that the, the agreement is, is carried out, yes. We, we, uh, would verify and particularly, uh, building and safety, uh, would also.
Well, I do just wanna clarify, it depends what one means by the agreement. What's before us today is simply a rezoning, uh, of it, a conditional rezoning of the property. That's clearly within the, the purview of planning, but if you're talking ultimately about any awarding of a license and a community benefits component to that, that would not fall under planning or building, it would fall under the clerk's office.
I guess I, I, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Councilman Parker, I guess when you talked about the agreement, I, you're referring to the conditional rezoning agreement, is that what you're referring to?
Yep.
Yes. That, we would ensure that that i- is being done. Also, yes, DPW gets involved very little, but definitely building, uh, would also play a heavy hand in securing, uh, making sure that they're following what that agreement says.
And that would be true for other parcels, correct? That if something was operating outside of an R1 residential, it'd be like, hey, you got a chop shop in your
Right.
Your back garage, you're violating the zoning.
Right.
That would essentially be a code?
It would be, it would start out with a code and then, uh, definitely in regards to those type of situations, obviously the sheriff's department gets involved too.
Yeah, I don't know why I went chop shop with my
The reason for-
Councilman Parker, you still have the floor?
No, I just wanted to state, the reason for my question is that we are approving zoning based on them meeting these ten things, correct? At some point. Zoning can be removed if they don't meet these ten things that-
That's correct.
Correct?
Yes.
And so that's why it's important that we know who's doing the check and getting the balancing of it.
Mm-hmm.
Or who's checking to see that they're meeting it?
We will.
And you, and that's safety?
No, it would-
DPW.
No.
Planning.
Planning.
Okay. Well, three, one out of three ain't bad. Okay, thank you.
Councilman James?
Yes, um, I, I think, uh, Councilman, uh, Carrington's point is well taken. This, the NF Lawrence LLC, uh, this is the first one of these kinds of, uh, of businesses to come on stream, so we do want to look at-
For this council.
Right, for this, for this council, uh, that have not gone through the vetting process through the clerk's office. So I, I, I think they've got a very strong proposal, uh, good business. One of my concerns, uh, from last week was there were some comments made about odor and, uh, of course, uh, I can't stand the smell of, uh, marijuana cigarettes, uh, myself. And so I was concerned about whether that would be a problem, but, uh, from Mr. Carrington's comments, when they did that visit, uh, it, it was not an issue, uh, at all, so, um, but we, what we're looking at is we still want to know if we can have, we would like to see a community benefit with not only, uh, the Lawrence, uh, uh, project, but any oncoming behind them, that we would like to have this in place. And I, I can appreciate the mayor's comments, but my question is what, what's the process here that we need to be able to get to where we would, I would like to be? And that is that these kinds of businesses and these kinds of, uh, of applications that come to us, that we have this set up for them? What's the process of getting to that?
Clerk Doyle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, the first step is to approve the zoning because the, they need a conditional rezoning agreement. They're not zoned, currently they're not zoned to actually be able to submit an application. So they wouldn't meet the zoning component of the medical marijuana application at this point. As it relates to community benefits, that will come with their application. And again, as I kinda mentioned during my budget hearing earlier, we're in the process of developing a community benefits tracking system. Medical marijuana applications are yearly renewable. So we will be tracking as these businesses come online, we will be tracking them throughout the year, and if they're not meeting their obligations as to what was stated, then their renewal applications will not get approved. So there is a component there as like a check, of course they will be able to appeal, but it's not like, once you approve the conditional rezoning agreement or we issue them a license, that they're not continuously checked upon. They're checked upon by the state, but they will also be checked upon, um, by the city as well through the clerk's office, through their yearly renewal application process.
Okay, I, I understand that, but I'm kind of confused with the mayor's comments that they do not have to have a, uh, a community benefit, so, uh, they do not need to have to make a community benefit, uh, proposal because our ordinance or, or the, the language in what was on the ballot did not require that. If that's, if I'm, if I'm correct, that's what I heard the mayor-
No, that's, that's not, that's not what I said.
Order, Councilman James has the floor. Uh, would you like to give the floor to Mayor Grimal to-
Yes, 'cause I wanna clarify.
You have the floor.
Yeah.
No, what I said is that the ordinance that was passed by the voters doesn't require a social equity component. It does require a community benefit component. And that's why, as I said, before the applicant can go and apply to the clerk's office and propose a community benefit component, before that can even happen, we have to rezon the property because they can't apply for a license for a grow and processing facility unless the property for which they're applying meets the zoning requirement. So before anything about community benefits can be processed or addressed or even applied for, we have to, and by we, I really mean council, have to approve the zoning for the property. And the only thing that's before council today is approving the conditional zoning. At that point, they can apply to the clerk's office, as part of that application, they must include a community, community benefits component to the application under the ordinance that was passed by the voters four years ago. What's not required by the ordinance four years ago is a social equity component, which President Pro Tem Carrington, uh, like I, strongly supports, but we don't have the discretion under the existing medical marijuana ordinance to require social equity per se.
Would you expound on social equity, please?
Well, social equity, uh, as I think President Pro Tem Carrington is referring to it and as I'm using it, is really about trying to advance broad social justice priorities in terms of diverse representation in ownership or employment. Uh, it could include addressing certainly, uh, certain, uh, longstanding residents, uh, it could, uh, include hiring or ownership interests for low income residents, it could include ownership components or hiring requirements for formerly incarcerated, uh, individuals. Uh, it could, of course, in theory, include, uh, certainly having an adequate ethnic diversity representation in ownership and employment, although the ability to do that is limited under the state constitution because of the anti-affirmative action amendment that was passed in two thousand and six. Uh, but there are other proxies that can, that can get at that in terms of longstanding residency or other components. Uh, so that's what's typically meant by social equity and what I presume President Pro Tem Carrington was referring to, uh, when he talked about social equity. That is not required under the ordinance that was passed four years ago, but community benefits are required based on the ordinance that was passed four years ago.
Others that wish to have the floor? Councilman Goodman?
I think one of the hard parts about this i- is recognizing that, uh, despite the desires of many of us on council at wanting more, uh, stringent rules and regulations, unfortunately the ordinance that we have been given lays out specific rules. And, and, again, despite the desires to want to put in these things that will obviously greatly benefit our community, as they should, unfortunately, we cannot, well fortunately and unfortunately, we cannot fault the applicants for, uh, participating in the system that, that was created. They, they, to this point, have played by the rules, they have, they have followed essentially what the city has laid out for them, uh, whether or not we, uh, agree with the implementation. Um, so I, I think that's a very important point. And also, again, recognizing that this is solely for the, the z- the zoning change, it says nothing about down the line, but also this does flag for us the need to address this, uh, before we move into recreational. If anything, this should highlight the importance of, of addressing those problems ASAP, uh, because of the situation that we are in where we realistically want to do a lot of things to make sure that our community is protected, but unfortunately, the, the, what is in front of us does not, uh, give us that grace. And again, it's unfortunate in what we want, however, as a, as a, a city body who was meant to represent the community and what they voted for, there, there comes a, a line where we have to go with, uh, what the people want and ver- versus what we want, and that's playing out currently. Um, but I just wanted to add that bit of information, 'cause I think it's extremely important when processing this information and trying to go forward.
Councilman James?
Yeah, I, I, I fully understand, uh, the issue before us, that this is a zoning issue. I mean, that is not, I, I think, you know, it, it's clear though, this is the first of these types of, of, uh, businesses of, that have come through.
True.
And we have these concerns. And we've expressed legitimate concerns. They have nothing to do with this particular application, but we have expressed concerns about this whole process that we want to see, you know, to take place. So I, I don't really have a problem with that. I mean, we're not saying, or at least I'm not saying that I'm not going to approve it, I am simply saying that this is something, this is how we would like to see these things progress.
Sure.
This is what we would like to see as a part of not just this proposal, but every proposal that they would incorporate these kinds of things. So we need to start that conversation somewhere so that we can talk about how do we move to this next step of, of getting the, the, uh, we know that we've got the community benefits, that's already a part of the process, and if we want to include some kind of social equity, how do we go about moving that needle? So I don't know if, if, if our attorney, Attorney Sharp can tell us what that next step would look like?
Mayor Grimal, then Attorney Sharp, then Councilman Nicholson?
Yeah, your, your point is really well taken, Councilwoman James, and I, I completely and a hundred percent agree with your observation. So it is, uh, absolutely legitimate, the concerns that you're expressing and the concerns others have expressed, I think all of us share those concerns. And I hope that the applicant will certainly take those interests and concerns into account when putting together their community benefit proposal. And I hope the Clerk Doyle will take those concerns into account when evaluating the community benefit proposal. Uh, to Councilman Goodman's point, and I think also to your point, Councilwoman James, it really speaks to the importance of being proactive, both branches, the legislative branch and the executive branch, being proactive and not allowing a initiative to be done, uh, by interest groups, but rather we as elected officials being proactive as we move forward and look at recreational marijuana, because if we really want to maximize social equity provisions, if we really wanna make sure that investment in this burgeoning industry lifts up Pontiac's residents, we need to be proactive and as elected officials, look out for the interests of residents instead of, um, being complacent and letting interest groups put a referendum on the ballot that doesn't properly serve our community's residents.
Legislative counsel Sharp?
Unfortunately, I'm just gonna say that, uh, prospectively, your opportunity is to do it with recreational. Unfortunately, with the medical, um, the city dropped the ball, it didn't happen. Uh, last council attempted to try to do that, but it didn't happen. And again, to go to Councilman Goodman's point, um, in playing devil's advocate, I think if you're just to be fair about it, it's really not the applicant's fault, um, to apply it evenly, the, again, the opportunity was to have that in place before applications were, uh, to be accepted, to be applied evenly. Unfortunately, that's not the case. Um, the clerk, uh, once you get past the zoning, has the opportunity then to review the community benefits. And again, if they're not in compliance with whatever they pledge, if they pledge anything, then that is taken into consideration with the scoring and the permit the following year. But unfortunately, I have to say, from my perspective, there's nothing that you can do as of now as it relates to social equity, and so you really can't penalize an applicant for not having something. Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson?
Uh, I wanna make a point to say that while we don't have a social equity program, it doesn't mean that the applicant isn't going to abide by a social equity standard. Um, I don't know them personally, so I can't speak for them, but it sounds like there was some diversity in the workforce, um, uh, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that. Um, I think, uh, uh, so often we say, we want to see this, we want to see this, and we sit up here and we say we, we, we are we. And, and so if we wanna see that, we can write that, 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 you know, that, this ordinance. And I'm so glad to hear that the clerk, uh, is taking those steps. Uh, tonight in a budget hearing, we heard about the work that they're doing to, uh, ensure that, that there are many different options and avenues for us to consider. Um, I'm glad that work is happening, um, inside of City Hall because that is a huge undertaking that's going to take a lot of legal review, um, to have happen. Uh, with that, I think I'd like to call the question, I think we need to talk about, uh, and, and take up the vote for rezoning.
Uh, so there's a motion to, um, end, uh, debate and move to vote, is there a second?
Correct.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion on calling the question, um, ending debate and, and moving into voting? Hearing, no further discussion, oh, I'll do the roll call on, uh, the, um, calling of the question, if you will. Rutherford?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Uh, McGinnis will vote yes, uh, so seven zero, um, that, uh, calls the question, so that means that we have, um, concluded debate on the motion before us. Uh, we move now to roll call voting on adoption of the resolution to approve zoning map amendment, ZMA twenty-two dash zero-three at one zero eight West Lawrence, um, from C3 corridor commercial to M1 light manufacturing with conditions. Um, on, on that adoption, roll call, uh, we'll give the, the clerk a moment. Um, it was, we voted seven zero to, um, end debate and, and move into voting, and so now where we are is, uh, roll call and adoption of the resolution, um, for the- call and adoption of the resolution for the approval of the zoning map amendment with conditions.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries.
Congratulations.
So I would see many more steps to come, but the conditional rezoning has been adopted on behalf of the people of Pontiac by the City Council. We move now to communications, and then followed up with that is public comment. The City Council wants to relay to the community that municipal cemetery offices will be closed on Memorial Day, May 30th, but will have extended availability on Saturday, May 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. if families need assistance ahead of the holiday. And that phone number, if you have questions, is 248-623-7705. Order in the chambers. Feel free to have conversation in the exterior or downstairs or outside. It's a beautiful May day in Pontiac, Michigan. All right, I'll continue with communications. Memorial Day ceremony is happening at Oak Hill Cemetery. Oh, spelling error, Cemetery. My apologies. May 30th at noon, held at Oak Hill Cemetery, 216 University Drive in Pontiac. Identify Your Dream Foundation stomp out the violence 12th Annual March and Rally on May 30th, 2022, from 11:00 to 2:00, held here at Pontiac City Hall. Pontiac Point of Hope 2022 is June 4th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 313 East Walton Boulevard in Pontiac, New Mount Moriah International Church. Michigan Secretary of State is holding a driver's license restoration clinic on June 10th from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., held at the Flagstar Strand Theater, 12 North Saginaw. Art Fish Fun is June 11th from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Bodett Park, which is at 786 Orchard Lake Road in Pontiac. The city clerk has four items to communicate. Clerk Doyle, would you like to lift those up?
So that's the upcoming budget hearing schedule. So the next budget hearing, no, I'm sorry, Tuesday, May 31st is the public hearing on the budget. So the public is invited between 4, starting at 4:00 p.m. for the public hearing on the mayor's proposed 2022-23 fiscal year budget. Then Wednesday, June 1st will be the department hearings for finance, which consists of income tax, as well as HR, IT, and communications. And then January, I mean, sorry, June 8th and June 9th, both from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., are focused on proposed amendments to the budget by the City Council.
Thank you very much. So for the community's benefit, the public hearing on the budget is Tuesday, May 31st in these chambers, starting at 4:00 p.m. We are now at public comment. President Protam Carrington?
Thank you, President McGinnis. First, foremost, Reginald Hayes. Mr. Quincy Stewart.
Somehow they people leave when public comment happens, it blows my mind. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Grimald and Melanie Rutherford, who's not present at the moment, for their help with our Crestwood, Ashwood block cleanup. He came out last year and worked his behind off, and this year it rained on us, so he picked up a few papers. What was more important was some of the information that was shared and the fact that someone from the city came out and showed some concern, and we thank you for the dumpster, we made good use of it. And so next year, we may or may not do it, we may try to coincide with the rest of the citywide cleanup, but if we can get it, we'll take it anyway. I wanted to make a comment too about what happened today. 19,350 firearm homicides in 2020, up nearly 35% compared to 2019. Centers for Disease Control said this, "The country has seen 212 mass shootings so far this year," according to a tally by the Gun Violence Archive. Now, I absolutely applaud you passing the thing with the orange shirts and everything, and that's great. But America was built on violence. This country was built on violence. It was gotten through violence, it continues through violence, and we condone the violence. When America goes to war, everybody gets patriotic, but we're really going out, people are going out to kill other people. And we send our young people out and put uniforms on them, shave their heads, put them through boot camp and say, "Go kill people you have absolutely no beef with or you do not know." So when we talk about violence and gun violence, we can't look at it in this little small window. America was built on violence until we change, until America changes this whole idea about selective violence. Black men are killed by police every day, or close to every day. That's violence, that's gun violence. I mean, there's violence, enough violence to go around. My man up here just mentioned the LGBTQQ community got its real start when somebody threw a brick. So I mean, when we really think about this, when he threw the brick at the, some kind of club or whatever, somebody rebelling against, it was some club or something, I can't remember, but they had every right to do what they were doing, but the point I'm trying to make is that everybody has engaged in violence. And until we address America's obsession with violence all the way around, we can't just pigeonhole and look at, "Well, there's gun violence here and gun violence there." I'm a teacher, I'm scared to death. When I go to work sometimes, I think to myself, "Somebody could come in and blow me away in my classroom." Now, when have we gotten to the point where a teacher has to have the same fears as a cop or somebody else? This is where we are in our community, this is where we are in the world. Until we address America's obsession with violence from its very origins up to now, we can wear orange shirts, but it's not going to fix everything.
I'll thank you, Mr. Stewart. Ms. Melissa Spurrie?
Good evening, everybody. I apologize for my attire today, but my staff and I at Oak Hill in Ottawa Park have been working around the clock for the last couple of days, trying to get it all in shape for this upcoming holiday weekend. Like Mike had said, we are not open on Monday, but we will be in the office, available for anybody's assistance on Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00. So that's really awesome. I'd like to just say one thing about the agenda today, and I just wanted to say that I'm totally backing the whole historical thing. The Buckland Chapel down at Oak Hill Cemetery could use some love and tenderness, and by being historical, hopefully there could be some grant money out there that could help us revive that, because I'm sure the citizens of Pontiac would love to use that thing. It was a beautiful staple, and there's beautiful photos in it. Unfortunately, it's just not usable at this time anymore. So that would be fantastic. What else is going on? Well, we're just working. I can tell you as the council that I do know there's quite a few people that will be attending next, the 31st, especially in regards to the streets and the roads at Ottawa Park Cemetery. I know that there are people coming that want to have that conversation with you guys at that meeting. I think that's about it. I mean, we're working around the clock, but you know, if you guys ever see me out and there's a question or concern, don't hesitate to stop me or my staff. Thank you.
Mr. Please stop.
What do you call me up for?
Good evening, City Council. I'm going to skip a few parts here. When Pontiac residents are calling for public services, especially water and sewer maintenance, we would appreciate the correct phone number or the correct office to contact county employees who don't act like they know what we're, where the taxpayers are talking about. We're not on the same page, we're the same book either. We too have other things we're doing and different pain we're going through. Thank you for the condolence card. And different pain we're going through, and we have money causing concerns, not complaints, and we, and our experiences are not always the same. We go through different things. It's serious. We don't want to be talked down to, talked over, talked under. We want civility for all senior citizens and women who have these same concerns. My neighbors are stopping me all the time because I used to work in that department asking questions, and the questions are different, things are different, things have changed. The 858-1110 number does something different, different people are getting it, and nobody knows what to do. I don't either because it's new to me. And Pontiac and Oakland County don't want to talk to us, the taxpayers. If you don't want to talk to us, remove your number and give us another number to talk to. Civility is what we really want. If you've got water running and the plumber's not there, you might need a shut-off. And I've talked to people at that 858 number who didn't know what I was talking about and said, "We don't know the service people." I said, "No, do you know the truck number?" And so some of the neighbors told me they were hung up on, they were hung up on. And call another number and, you know, be put in a queue and to be called back for an emergency and put in a queue. So you call the number, and it gives you an emergency number, and everybody doesn't have a computer or ten fingers to type, I used to fingerprint people, and if they can get their wheelchair close enough to a computer, some people can't even do that. So we're just, you know, citizens, taxpayers, we've lived in the city for decades, we've raised our children and their children, and we are constituents, residents of the city. Some people working for us feel too comfortable disrespecting us, so wait until service employees hang up on the right person. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Julia Ruffin? And then Mr. John Boe after Ms. Julia Ruffin.
Honorable body and mayor, first I want to say I am an individual who really cares about the health and environment of our community. Some people stated that there's no side effects or issues with pollution pertaining to marijuana, and that's not true. There's a part of the chemical called biogenetic volatile organic compounds and terpines that are becoming issues in Colorado, and they're mentioned in Eagle on the website. So all I'm asking, I'm not trying to stop what the people voted for, because we have to do it. As part of the social equity, health equity, we have businesses that will be coming here, that will be transformational, that will be building jobs, but at the same time, we've got to also have best practices in place to address these issues that create environmental impact when we have, I don't care if it's marijuana or whatever industry comes into this community. We need best practices, and it's not about the applicant, it's not about anyone, it's about our health. If you have a sick workforce, what good is a job? So I ask that you consider, research, put best practices in place as we have these transformational industries coming into our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruffin. Mr. James? Sabish?
When issues come before the public, like the marijuana, it did not necessarily get voted in, but it got voted in not only by the people who voted, but the people who Now that it's here, it becomes a personal choice. You want to know what part you play in this public of Pontiac City. We are all part of the solution or part of this problem. It's your personal choice. I was in the Army for three years, spent two years in Germany during the 50s. When Russia put up that wall in Berlin, wanted compensation, it was pretty serious business. We're constantly trained in the field to kill and be prepared to be killed. Life is a learned process. In this process of learning, you have to compensate as you get older and learn. Because you've been trained to kill does not mean you need to kill. I suppose it depends somewhere in what your relationship is to G O D. It's all a personal decision. You're part of the solution or part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. John Boe? And that would conclude after this a public comment. President McGinnis, after Mr. Boe.
Evening, mayor, council members. Just a couple of things. The first one is regarding cannabis and what I'm going to refer to as cannabis cafes. There's another name for it, but just for my position here, cannabis cafes. These are things that are incredibly valuable because I've been all over this country, and the one place I've been to is Amsterdam, and I can assure you, the one thing you would love to see is Pontiac turn into another Amsterdam. It is a beautiful place, and it has all the old, the old buildings and everything, Pontiac has that. Pontiac has the central location. Pontiac has everything, but it doesn't have anything downtown. Downtown is a ghost town right now, you all know that. So why can't we take that area, turn it into an area with cannabis cafes? Because with that comes a plethora of eateries and munchy places that people like me will demand, and that is business that will be given to local people. These places that you're trying to bring in, the grow facilities, they'll give a few jobs, the money is going to the owners. That's how it works. If you want to do this correctly, look at it long-term. We have to, you have to realize cannabis cafes are coming. You can try and pretend that it isn't, but if you want to take advantage of it, get out in front and take advantage of it, lean into it. It is ours. We can take advantage of this, and that is, so that's my first thing. I would love to see this happen in the downtown area because we have the buildings, we have the ability. That's my first thing. The second thing is I've spent, I've spent my whole life living in different areas, all over Oakland County, all over the country. The one place, there's one place besides Pontiac that I've had trouble with, and that was in Texas. That's roosters. Roosters. Why? Why am I listening to roosters go off at 5:30 every morning? I've called to complain multiple times over the last five years, and it'll happen every time, the roosters will quiet down for a couple of weeks, and then sure enough, they come back. It's Pontiac. It's right in the dead center of Oakland County. Why am I talking to people about roosters? I've never lived in another town anywhere, except for Texas, that roosters are a problem. And I am tired of it, and you guys will be seeing me a lot more because I am not letting this one go. So please, get used to this face because you will be seeing me again. Thank you.
Sir, can you provide your address so we know which district you're in?
Certainly. He's in six.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But it is against city ordinance. Roosters are prohibited.
Oh, I understand that. That doesn't stop them.
I understand. I'm just want the community to know that if you know of a residence that has a rooster, code enforcement can act or attempt to reconcile the issue, but I understand what the resident's saying is that it's a continuing problem. I just want, not everyone's clear that roosters are prohibited by city ordinance.
Can I address that? Is it possible, the one thing?
Unfortunately, your time.
Okay.
And usually, we're not supposed to interject, but it's a unique item that you raised, and I wanted the community to be aware of that.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Larry Jasper.
Thanks, guys. I'm glad to see the city council looking at social equity. I've been talking about this for two and a half years, and the ex-mayor made sure that my resolution, emergency resolution, which I provided to the council, was set up in a memorandum of understanding that provided social equities. I also have provided now the council and the mayor the fact that you can terminate the global settlement agreement and start over. That ship hasn't sailed. If we were to do that, the citizens would, just to go through a list, ownership, GSA doesn't provide anything to the citizens, but the LC does. Dividends, no. LC, yes. Water discounts, yes. No for GSA. Electric discounts, electricity, no for the GSA, yes for the LC. Sewage discounts, no for the GSA, yes for the LC. Job development, yes, for the little cities. Mass transit, yes for the little cities. Preference for the jobs. The Pontiac community is made up of approximately 70% African-Americans. They would have those jobs. It would be to the city, and that is something legally you can do. Digital services, discount, no to GSA. Yes, the little city. Cable, internet, and the phone, no and yes. Now, I'm going to tell you, the emergency manager didn't take your assets. Who took your assets was corrupt politicians who decided they wanted to have money in their pockets. Now, the infrastructure funding is M.DOT, 25 million. Buy dollars, 37 million. If we terminate the GSA, that's another 20 million, and we would match that. That means $168, $4 million investment in the city of Pontiac, and the citizens would own it. We have hyperinflation coming, guys. 35% increases in rents. Gas prices are going to hit $6 or $7, and we're talking $18 an hour. Won't cover that. I don't care. $40 will. The mass distribution, the prototype would go from Phoenix Center, Donwoodward, South Boulevard, up Uptown and back through 59. That provides you a bridge in walking into downtown, but it also provides 12,000 people. Instead of saying to Bill, "Sorry to see you leave. We know that you didn't have any business and you couldn't stay open." This brings business. This is something that would attract. You have the right and you have to make a precedence right now. You have the ability to make that happen. You, no ordinance, you don't have to redo it. All you have to do is terminate what was there and have a partnership that actually benefits your citizens. And that's what nobody else wants to do. I didn't, I told you my story last week, not because I enjoyed it. It hurts a lot, but I understand how people have had to live in this city for the last 20 years, and it's sick and tired that every city in the country is the same way. So be number one. Be the leader. Show the way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comment.
Thank you, President Protem Carrington. Closing comments, Mayor Grimal.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Couple of items. I know that we shared communications about some important events happening this Memorial Day, Monday, May 30. I do want to add one event to that. There is a Memorial Day event hosted by the VFW Hall out on Cesar Chavez. That event is happening at Perry Mount Cemetery at the Pontiac Veterans Memorial. That occurs at 11:00 a.m. this Monday, Memorial Day, at Perry Mount Cemetery. But we've got a couple of other really important competing events as well, and just to, again, emphasize the importance of those events as well. Also, at 11:00 a.m. is the Identify Your Dreams Foundation Stomp Out the Violence event in March here at City Hall, as well as the Memorial Day Ceremony at Oak Hill Cemetery at noon on Monday, May 30, Memorial Day. I heard Ms. Cobb speak, and it looks like she may have stepped out. I was going to say, I'd love to talk with Ms. Cobb a little more in-depth about her concerns, although her reference to water and sewer line replacement and an 858 number sounds like it's about the Water Resources Commission replacing pipes and infrastructure in neighborhoods, and it sounds like she's been calling the county and been given the runaround by the county. We have had a representative of the Water Resources Commissioner who happens to be in attendance this evening, so I was hoping to connect the two of them. I will try to follow up with Ms. Cobb if she's left for good tonight. I'll try to follow up with her tomorrow. Finally, regarding, whoop. Okay, maybe they were talking out in the hallway and actually addressing that topic of the Water Resources Commission.
They've connected before, Mayor. They've connected before.
They have connected before, okay. And regarding roosters, you know, to just amplify President McGinnis's point earlier, roosters are not allowed under city ordinance, and so to the extent that there are people with roosters, it's more of an enforcement issue, and I would encourage folks to let us know if their neighbors have roosters who are a problem so that we can dispatch code enforcement officers to those addresses to address that problem. And that, President McGinnis, is all I have to share this evening.
Thank you, Clerk Garland Doyle.
Mr. President, I did want to announce to the community, the Charter Revision Commission has scheduled its first meeting. Its first meeting will be on Monday, June 6 at 6:00 p.m., and the meeting will be held here in the city council chambers. Thank you.
Councilwoman William Parker, Jr., District 5. Closing comments.
Thank you, Brother President. I really don't have any comments, so District 5.
All right, District 4. Is that true?
That's true.
Oh, okay, all right. District 4, Councilman Kathleen James, who had a birthday. Give a warm, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Which we'll be toasting to after the meeting tonight. Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
I have one comment. District 4, our Zoom community council meeting will not take place on this Thursday as scheduled because we have a, we have a council meeting that night. We have a budget meeting. So we will have it on June 2, Thursday. That's next Thursday night, June 2 at 6:00 p.m. Again, the District 4 Community Council Zoom meeting will take place next Thursday at 6:00 p.m. on June the 2. And we also, I want to also thank the DPW Department for working with the Pontiac Community Foundation, Friends of the Pontiac Parks, and also Relief of Michigan to plant 21 trees on the, near Baldwin Park this past Saturday. We also got caught in the rain, but we did get the job done. We planted 21 beautiful trees out there, and so I want to thank the DPW for all of their hard work in working with us to get those trees in, so.
And did we see that your grandchildren were also enlisted into the cause?
I got everybody I could. We had some folks, some of our volunteers did not come back after the rainstorm, but, you know, most of us did come back and we did get those trees in, so.
Well, a warm welcome and shout-out to Councilman James's family.
Thank you. Oh, my daughter and granddaughter are here today visiting from Texas. Taylor Ivy is a junior at Howard University, and my daughter Kathleen is employed by... Do you know?
Thank you for sharing your beloved mother with the entire city of Pontiac.
She's a Googler.
Fantastic, fantastic. Welcome and happy Kathleen James birthday season to you both. Doing double duty on behalf of District 3 since Councilman Goodman stepped out. He's got announcements for Councilman Goodman, but in addition, District 6 is Representative President Protem William Carrington. Your closing comments.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Actually, I just got some quick announcements. Community Engagement and Operations Subcommittee is this Friday at 4:00 p.m. in the council legislative conference room. I also like to just wish the city a happy Memorial's Day. Please be safe and have a great weekend. Good night.
Thank you. That reminds me, I know there are certain holidays of the year that fireworks are permitted in Michigan. Is Memorial Day one of them? Okay, good. All right. Councilman Nicholson, District 2.
I want to say thank you to everybody that came out for our district meeting last night at Goldner Walsh. It was well-attended, but it was not as well-attended. We only had about 50 people last night, but it was a good showing. Heard last night that Epiphany Glass Studio is finishing, is ready to finish their brand-new parking lot, which we're all really excited about, but this weekend, they do have one of their final classes before, they have to shut down for a brief period of time to do that parking lot, so there were 10, as of last night, there were 10 spaces left. If you'd like to participate in one of their in-class studios, you can go to their Epiphany Glass's website and sign up, and it is a keepsake crematory project. So if you bring some ashes of a loved one or a pet, you can incorporate them into a keepsake, and it'll be Epiphany Glass Studio in District 2.
How about a rooster?
I don't know that they put roosters in the glory hole, but it is 2,000 degrees, so they do have to, they do take hiatus in the summertime from doing those classes. So, because it does get a little too hot in the studio to have too many people there. But other than that, we do have, I want to give a reminder that the next District 2 Advisory Council meeting is actually not going to be at Goldner Walsh. It is the fourth Monday of every month. This coming month, we are going to have our, we have a community jam session in Indian Village Park. So there'll be food, bring a dish to pass if you want to, bring a blanket to lay out, but we're going to have our meeting in Indian Village Park, and we're going to brainstorm about how we want to improve the biggest, the largest park in District 2, which is very small. But with that, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. For District 7, I want to acknowledge that we finally have, at the corner of Ardmore and South Francis, those two dumped dressers are gone. Thank goodness. They've been picked up, but I want to flag for the mayor's attention, I've submitted this to staff previously, but for us to follow up, there's a hole in the middle of that intersection at South Ardmore and Chandler. And so if, it's coned off, but it's like, just like a sinkhole in the middle of the road. So I was curious what resolution might be planned for Chandler and South Ardmore. I've also taken some pictures, and I'll be submitting to the appropriate departments about some overgrowth on city property. The former Purdue School on the south side, it's kind of like overgrown over the sidewalk, so it's hard to pass. Just want to clear up some of the neglect on Chandler so that way, people are less likely to dump. So that, we've talked about in our previous budget hearing about how we can proactively nip dumping in the bud so that way we can have as clean, safe, and passable and pleasant neighborhoods as possible. And so wherever, wherever we can, we're looking strategically in District 7 to tackle neglected items that we can address. Some items are more longstanding, private property, et cetera. I'm looking forward to the batch 17 demolitions to be in full force so that way we can rid our neighborhoods and commercial corridors of some longstanding blight issues. But with that, let's give it to Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford for the final closing comment for District 1.
Good evening. The world is changed by your example, not by your opinion. We cannot change our city unless we move as a city. We cannot allow our own bitterness, lowbrow energy change our community. You must change it by showing understanding, respect, and simple human decency. We will change our community by being an example. My example of what Pontiac could be is Quincy Stewart. His example of community effort as a whole is what we should all strive to be, unapologetic, boastful, proud, and most importantly, a pride that goes undeniable, unshakable. It is because of that that every week I am empowered to be better, do better, and to act better because we, as a city, must change so that our community can change. I had the pleasure and the honor of being a part of the Astrowood Crestwood Estate cleanup. I was so determined to get there, I rode my bike. I want to get there because I want to live and breathe and be the example and not just talk the talk. I want to walk the walk, and I think we can all build on that.
Or ride the ride.
Oh, ride the ride, too. I like that. So the goal for this week is just be humanly, just be kind of humans. You ain't got to like somebody, but you got to respect everybody. And on that note, I say, good night.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
So moved.
It's been moved by Parker, seconded by Nicholson. Here we know discussion, roll call and adjournment. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis? Yes. That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 8:42 p.m. Thank you very much for your time this evening.